I'm now called to March 2nd, 2020. Blue Springs City Council, me in order if you would stand for me, observe moment of silence. I'll lead you into place for allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. May be seated. Welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might watch later on YouTube or City Channel. If you are here for the Earhart Estates Chapman Farm Project, it has been withdrawn. So unless you just want to sit through here, sit through it, you can leave and enjoy your evening. Okay, nobody want to leave? You want to stay through the rest of it? Okay, that's fine. Yep, somebody's gonna leave. There are items that need to be pulled, we'll do that, otherwise I accept a motion of approval.
Show me.
The second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we'll have a motion to remove from the table, Bill Number 4731. This is the bill that we delayed the vote on until staff had an opportunity to take a look at the, uh... 4732?
32?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Two of them, 4731 and 32.
I'll move to remove them from the table.
Pardon?
I'll move to remove them both from the table.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next we have introduction reading of Bill 4731. Who would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4731, an ordinance rezoning property from single-family planned residential overlay to single-family planned development for Cambridge Park.
Your Honor, move the bill to be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
There's a second.
Second.
There's discussion. Council member Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. I introduced it to where if voting aye would pass it, and voting no would obviously not vote for rezoning. I guess I do want to, uh, it's been a couple of weeks now, um, the, uh, it doesn't sound like the protest petition that we were waiting on, I guess you want to address that?
Yes, that's correct. Um, we reviewed all of the protest petitions received, there was one received today even, and the area of the owners who are signing the protest petitions does not meet the 30% requirement in Missouri statute. So there is just the, a majority approval required.
Okay.
And I guess I want to talk, I would've said some of the same things last time, um, two weeks ago. The, uh, I, to me, what's different about this, the Houdal and Colonial, I realize those were both rezoned, uh, to the PD before. However, this one has got more adjacent residences to, uh, near them, it's got more residents concerned about this, uh, more residents talking about their property values. And so to me, it is, it is a different vote tonight than it was on those others. Um, I know Houdal, the original one, was, was turned down, and they came back and with a different proposal, and it was passed. The, uh, another thing that I've been mentioning before, and that's the PRO language, there's a, there's an element in there, uh, you know, that says that, hey, if you, if the, if the land is sold, um, basically the expectations of the prior, if, that development at the time of rezoning, you know, need to be carried on. And, and I think that's worth supporting. Um, it's, uh, it's kind of a commitment, if, to the people that moved in over there, if they had read that, uh, it's kind of a commitment from the city to, you know, make sure that development, that when the property is sold, that it is, the same expectations are carried on. Um, so from the property values angle, from the commitment in our ordinance, and, and also the land bank is still technically the property owner of this, to me, the land bank should, should honor that commitment, uh, it's in the ordinance, and we should all try to support that, so.
Let me go to staff. If, if anything changed, it would have to come back before the council anyway, right?
Should this get approved tonight? Or, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's say the developer sold the property.
Yes.
The same expectation with what we passed tonight would be incumbent on the new property owner to follow those, follow the ordinance with me.
It would, um, unless the, the PD concept plan were to expire, and then if that were to be the case, then they would have to come back before City Council to have a new concept plan approved.
Okay, so I guess what I'm looking for is a safeguard. So, so you believe the safeguard is there?
I do.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Um, the safeguard is for the, the concept plan, it has nothing to do with the zoning. Um, and I know that other property to the north is in a PRO, um, so it's not like the PROs don't exist. And we back in January rezoned some property from a PRO, uh, GB, from PR, oh, let me get it straight, from GR, from GB PRO to a, uh, GB PRO and a two-family PRO. So we did just a month ago approve a PRO. So it does exist. And I know that, uh, the, uh, staff would like us to do away with that, but they do exist, and they are referenced. I went through and read up on, and I actually have an email, copy of an email that came to my B, uh, came to my attention from, from Mr. Mallon. Um, and it talked about the zoning and the concept plan and the PRO. So it does exist, PROs do exist.
So right now, we're considering whether we rezone.
Right.
The PRO to a PD.
But I'm being told that we're doing that because the PROs are non-existent anymore, but they are existing.
Okay, yep, Mr. Johnson.
Council member Culpepper, the item you're referencing that occurred was Eagles Ridge, I believe?
Yes, it was.
And that PRO was allowed to proceed and be in place and be rezoned because there was construction that had, had occurred on that PRO. There has been no construction on this particular project that is being dealt with tonight, which is why the recommend, the PRO expired in 2011. Had there been construction that had occurred on this particular development in 2009, 2010 or 2011, we wouldn't be talking about a rezoning from a PRO to a PD tonight.
Your Honor?
That's correct.
I, I think that the concept plan expired, the PRO has not. And, and I think that, I worked with Mr. Mallon as well, um, the, the PRO zoning classification is, is in our zoning classifications today, and it even says that you can use the Plan Development Process, which is the new UDC code that we're talking about, to develop that PRO land. So it can be developed. Matter of fact, I've been saying, you know, what, what is a, if you just went with the current zoning for a little minute, just to see what it would be like, what would a plan look like? I don't think it'd be a whole lot different for the developer. Um, it, it may wholesome, they, they've been saying they're going to meet the standards of a PRO. Well, the easy way to do that is to leave the zoning the way it is.
Anyone else like to come in? Okay, anyone else? Okay, so we had a motion, we had a second, we had a discussion, and we're on the first reading. Uh, let's roll call it.
Council member Fowler.
No.
Erickson.
No.
Edmondson.
Yes.
Culpepper.
No.
Kayler.
Yes.
Levise.
Yes.
Mayor Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries with a 4-3 vote, with council members Culpepper, Fowler, and Erickson voting no.
Okay, second read.
Second reading of Bill Number 4731, an ordinance rezoning property from single-family planned residential overlay to single-family planned development for Cambridge Park.
Move the bill be approved on the second and final reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
And further discussion? See you now, roll call, please.
Council member Erickson.
No.
Edmondson.
Yes.
Culpepper.
No.
Kayler.
Yes.
Levise.
Yes.
Fowler.
No.
Mayor Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries with a 4-3 vote, given ordinance number 4889.
Okay. Next, we have introduction reading of Bill Number 4732.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4732, an ordinance approving the Cambridge Park Plan Development Concept Plan.
Move the bill be approved on the first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
No.
Well, roll call it.
Council member Edmondson.
No, or aye?
With an aye.
Aye.
Culpepper.
No.
Kayler.
Yes.
Levise.
Yes.
Fowler.
No.
Erickson.
No.
Mayor Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries with a 4-3 vote.
All right, second read.
Second reading of Bill Number 4732, an ordinance approving the Cambridge Park Plan Development Concept Plan.
Move the bill be approved on the second reading and given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Council members, Culpepper.
No.
Kayler.
Yes.
Levise.
Yes.
Fowler.
No.
Erickson.
No.
Edmondson.
Yes.
Mayor Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries with a 4-3 vote, given ordinance number 4890.
Okay, we withdrew the next three items, so we're going to move to item number 10. Introduction reading of Bill 4738.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4738, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for legal services between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri and the law firm of Littler Mendelson P.C.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4738, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for legal services between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri and the law firm of Littler Mendelson P.C.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Council members, Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Motion carries and given ordinance number 4891.
Next, have introduction reading of Bill 4739.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4739, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for legal services between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri and Gilmore and Bell P.C.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4739, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for legal services between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri and Gilmore and Bell P.C.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Council members Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number 4892.
Next, have introduction reading of Bill 4740.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4740, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for legal services between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri and Gilmore and Bell P.C.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4740, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for legal services between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri and Gilmore and Bell P.C.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Council members Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number 4893.
Introduction reading of Bill 4741.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Bill Number 4741, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for legal services between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri and Gilmore and Bell P.C.
Your Honor, move, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4741, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for legal services between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri and Gilmore and Bell P.C.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4741, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for legal services between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri and Gilmore and Bell P.C.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Council members Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number 4894.
Next, we have a council discussion on regulation for fence construction. It's my understanding in 2018, we adopted the Unified Development Code that made some changes, and I know, uh, council member Erickson has some concerns about it, so you want to lead the discussion?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. The, uh, it came to my attention that one of our constituents had an issue with the fence, and I was very surprised to see that, uh, the finish side of the fence was not facing his property from a neighbor's fence. And I thought, wait a minute, that's not code. So, because it always has been, at least in my opinion, and then I found out it did change in 2018, when we, it's, the council at that time changed the code to make it so that the finish side had to be on the right of ways and street prints, which I think there's some reasoning for that, but to me, it seems correct and right and fair that the homeowner should have the finish side to the property that does not, that is not the fence. In other words, that's back to like it should, like it was before, 2018. There was also a small section, I think it was in 2015, if my numbers are right, that made it so that we didn't have to limit the, the numbers of fence construction materials. Prior to that, uh, as I recall, I think when, um, one of our former planners, when our codes people were here, um, you could only have two different types of construction. So there's really two issues. The main one to me is changing it back so that the finish side needs to be out on all fence construction.
And Unified Development Code, we changed that based on, for no other reason, just because that was the new language in the Unified Development Code, right?
From 2015?
Whatever.
Yeah, the 2015 change came about, um, and, and removed the prohibition on more than one material for the fences. Um, I think that was just to kind of make standards, um, a little bit more flexible for homeowners. Uh, the change in 2018, uh, was initiated, um, by staff to be included, uh, because of the numerous complaints that we had received, um, that kind of stemmed from feuds or arguments between neighbors and, um, the, in order to install a fence on the property line or repair pickets on a fence, uh, that needs maintenance, um, to be able to access the, the finish side of the fence under the current, or the code at that time, um, somebody would have to go on to the neighbor's property in order to put those pickets in. And so, um, when you have a situation where two neighbors do not like each other and will not, one will not let the other on the other property, uh, we had had that issue come up numerous times, um, in our codes department, um, and, uh, in order to help alleviate that, um, we reduce, or we removed that requirement.
So regardless of what code we come up with, there's going to be one neighbor that's going to be unhappy.
Yes.
Okay. Your Honor, if I might, uh, the current code, as it's listed, pardon me, as it's listed in the, uh, lease summit codes, does require finish side everywhere out in Lee Summit, which sometimes we use our neighbors as an example. I understand that we, we tried to make a situation to alleviate a few problems, but in my opinion, it seems like we're creating more problems than we're alleviating. Uh, I did speak to a prominent fence company last week, and they see no issues. They ought to be able to put a fence up so it can be maintained, et cetera, and I think if that's, if it can't be done, then we can't control how, how they do that, so.
Well, let's kind of get a feel from the rest of the council, you want to chime in on it, to see what your thoughts are?
Yeah, Your Honor, the other thing I, I think we need to look at is this, how many different kinds of material we allow fence to be made out of. Um, I don't think it's right to have five or six different kinds of materials, um...
Your Honor.
...to construct one fence.
Your Honor. Uh, well, I guess on the finish side out thing, I'm a little ambivalent on. To me, you would want the finish side to be out because that prevents people from climbing into your fence, when you have a privacy fence.
Right.
So it's a safety thing, but, uh, I however disagree with Councilman Culpepper, I think we should allow pretty much whatever is reasonable. I think in order to give as many options, especially when you're talking about costs, you want to have more than just one option or two options.
Oh, no, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I'm saying for a single fence.
Okay.
I'm not talking about separate houses.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to see, I don't want somebody but a fence.
We don't restrict the number of options for our residents to build fences.
Yeah, no, I just don't want to see a single fence across the back, one person's backyard out of six materials.
A little chain link here, a little picket there.
Little cardboard and a little picket, right.
Yeah. Actually, in my neighborhood, there is a fence with three pieces, and I was told previously that was grandfathered because we didn't have that ordinance, and then apparently that changed as well. It doesn't look very good.
And I meant some of it's probably regulated by homeowners associations too.
Well, I'm sure, yes, we have homeowners associations as well, but...
Well, I guess what I need to know, council, do we want to bring an ordinance back that will change it back the way it was?
If I may, Your Honor?
Yeah.
One quick comment on my part. Um, since the way my house situates on the property, if I want somebody to come in, and my fence faces out.
Right.
Okay, so the inside has got the support structure showing, but, um, and it's been there a long time, and it does need repair, but I need to get permission from six separate homeowners to be able to go on their property to try to repair my fence, which at times can be daunting, and I have yet to find a fence company that, they say, you go get that, we'll come in and look at it, because of the cost. If I was replacing the whole fence, it would be no problem, but to come back and make repairs, a lot of them won't touch it.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Uh, throw my two cents in. Uh, I, I'm, I'm with, uh, finish side or inside or out, doesn't make any difference. You know, if you're paying for a fence to, uh, put it up, you should have that option doing it. I do know for a fact, there was an issue where the police had to be called on a fence company that was trying to install a fence because the two neighbors were feuding with each other and did not like them on their property. And then if you don't put it, your fence on the edge of your property, and you bring it in two foot, then the neighbor's not going to take care of it, and then you're going to get in trouble for your grass being too tall. So with that being said, it doesn't matter whether it's face out, face in on that, but I, I will have to agree with, uh, on the other side over there, with, uh, the number of products being in one fence. Now, I don't, I'm like with the Councilman Levise, um, I don't want to narrow the different types down, but again, I don't want to see five different types of fence in one house.
So you don't want a chain link, and then a wood, and then a chain link?
I know, because...
I'm giving you a hard time.
So what you're looking for is consistency in product, I think is what you're saying.
Yes.
Sometimes if you're, if you're bound by, uh, like Kent, if you have that many neighbors, what if it's their fence that's, that makes your backyard, and then you may have different types of fence, right?
And I do, there's chain length that go up to it, there's, uh, everything's been attached to mine, so let's put it that way. Uh, that's one of the things with your house, is one of the first ones in that addition, the first one to get the fence up, everybody wants to tie in. So chain links hooked in in two different locations, uh, another fence is tied in on a corner, um, yeah, it's, it, it can be a nightmare in some aspects.
Your neighbors would like to thank you for being the pilgrim I put in the first round.
Yeah, they get the good view.
Well, you know, I said that, but when I, when I stop and think about, we do have homes that have large properties where they put like a wrought iron across the face of it, and then the balance of it is done in privacy fence.
Okay, so what's...
Yeah, that's two fences, two types.
What's your pledge? Do you want to have staff draw something else to change it back to the way it was prior to adoption of the UDC in 2012?
Let me give you a recommendation.
Okay, you're going to get a recommendation there.
Um, there are multiple opinions about this particular issue, and originally, this went to the Development Advisory Committee, and then it went to the Planning Commission, and then it ultimately came to the City Council. So let's staff take the item back to the Development, the DAC, uh, present these issues, these concerns, get their, uh, recommendation and opinion, and then we can bring it forward to the Planning Commission, and then ultimately to the City Council, where you can, uh, either agree with their recommendations or adopt something different. Does that sound reasonable? Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds good to me.
May I, may I say one more thing, sir?
Yes.
Um, one of the troubling parts of, of this fence, finished side out and right-ofways and where we can see it, it's, it's, to me, it's like we're saying, okay, the folks that are driving down the neighborhood, or the folks that are driving through town, do they get a look at the good side of the fence? The people that are living, and really maybe not even want a defense, they're going to be living there for 15, 20, some, some people 30 years or more, looking at the outside of the fence, and sure, they can come out, or, excuse me, the pole side of the fence. So it seems like we're creating a double standard. I just think we need to focus on the majority and the, and the ambiance in the community as opposed to the rare ones where we have a, a border war, if you will.
So I think we got a plan in place. We're going to take it through the process with the DAC, Planning Commission, then they'll come back to us with a recommendation. Okay, is that okay? All right. We're going to move on to mayoral announcements. Eric's going to kind of go under the night a little bit tomorrow morning, first thing, so I'll stop with you. This evening. Two of them, yeah, so, yeah, we'll be good. Um, the, uh, this, the month of March is Women History Month, and tonight's going to come from Michelle Obama, and I quote, "History has shown us that courage can be contagious, and hope can take on a life of its own," end quote. Uh, we have a executive session we need to go into, so we're going to defer to our city attorney. Oh, visitors, thank you. Uh, Daniel, are you still here and want to talk on, on the Cambers? That's already been done. Is Daniel, did he leave? I guess he left. Okay, and next, we have the fence order, you got Kevin. Kevin, you heard what the plan is.
Yes.
And then you'll have an opportunity to, to talk when, when those go before the DAC and the Planning Commission, and then come back to us.
So if I want to follow back up on this topic, I need to kind of start when that gets...
Yeah, we're going to start it back, we're going to start vetting it back through the process.
Okay.
So there's nothing we're going to be able to do tonight on it.
Yeah.
Can, your honor, would you just hear his position? What, what does he want done?
Well, if you can't guess, I would be that resident where this, I've got pictures, and it's, it's much more of an eyesore than you would actually think, but, um, I hear the part about the, you know, maintenance, and, you know, I would say generally speaking, a fence company is going to, you know, kind of, unless you get a full survey done, it's kind of a rough guess on where these fences are going anyways, and you know, when it comes down to it, if you actually had formal surveys done and an argument, more often than not, a fence is probably not where it's supposed to be, so there's some, a lot of assumptions made. Um, but when it, you, you, when you think about the maintenance of a fence, and if those poles and the support bars are actually facing the opposite direction where it goes, so, you know, you, you mentioned the general maintenance of, you know, cutting the lawn and everything else. Um, you know, flip that backwards, and now whose responsibility is it to go up and physically weed it and everything else on that, that, the, the support side of it, so that's actually on their property? It actually makes the maintenance of that area much harder if it's reversed, and honestly, I think you're, you're just signing up for a lot more issues with the maintenance and of the, uh, lawn itself and weeds and, and whatnot, with it not facing the, the right direction, so, um, you know, I drove, since then, it's just happened about, about two weeks ago. I've driven around, uh, Blue Springs, haven't found a single fence or any other scenario where anybody ever chose to do this. Outside of this scenario, I won't go into the reasons why this fence, that's a whole nother story, but, um, it, it's, it's quite the eyesore. Um, you know, if you want to see what it looks like, I'd highly recommend you drive by and take a look at it.
So I wanted you to make sure you get his contact information, so as we go through this vetting process, you make sure that you're there to provide testimony.
Absolutely, I'd love to. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, city attorney.